I'd like to call the order, the Westmont Village Board Meeting, December 6th, 2018, at 6 o'clock PM, and have Clerk Czynski do the roll call.
Mayor Gunther?
Here.
The clerks here, Trustee Addington?
Here.
Trustee Barker?
Here.
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Guzzo?
Here.
Trustee Little?
Here.
Trustee Nero?
Here.
Attorney Carrera?
Here.
Village Manager May?
Here.
Finance Director Parker?
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting, and the first item is open forum. This is an opportunity for anybody who has anything not on the agenda to address the board, saying none, I'll close open forum, move on to reports. My report, I'm gonna call Larry McIntyre to give us some updates on some exciting programs that we're starting.
Thank you, Mayor, and Glenn, if we can get that image up there, I'll zoom it in a little bit. So that is the group of the Student Exchange kids that came from Taiwan during the month of November, and specifically the two weeks leading up to Thanksgiving, and we had a total of nine students, one teacher, one principal, and those are all the host families there as well, as well as members of the Sister City Committee and District 201, but it was an amazing opportunity and event once again, and I'd maybe ask Trustee Little to talk a little bit about it. At the last moment, we were short one family, and I gave Trustee Little a call, and she stepped up to the plate and ended up being one of the host families, but I thought everything went pretty well.
I think that all the students had a wonderful time. I know that mine, I cautioned him about at the very beginning, if you have an opportunity to do anything, take it, don't turn any, anything down, and he went into the city five or six times, he ice skated, went to the movies, we built a gingerbread house, they just had so much fun, and I think that it was a huge success. I've heard from him almost every day since he got home, so we bonded.
Absolutely, and in fact, he made a video, I believe, of the trip and sent that to everybody involved with the group, so, once again, those connections will last a lifetime, and what's exciting about it is now we're getting ready to go over there for spring break this upcoming March, and Pete Landreth, who's a teacher up at the high school, he's in charge of putting all that together, and it's exciting, of course, Ambassador Yang will be with part of that as well.
And how many days did they attend classes, do you know?
Um, over there or when they were here?
Here.
Here, so they were here for seven, for seven days they were at our school, because spring break start, I'm sorry, Thanksgiving break started on the Wednesday, so they're for the, a full week and then the two days leave just before.
On top of all the traveling they were attending our school and learning a little bit about.
Yep, and we just had a Sister City sub-meeting the other day, and we're already planning their itinerary for the kids going over there, and they'll be in school for two full weeks over there, so it'll be exciting. And then should I just continue on?
Keep going, you can.
All right. Next thing here is Holi Days. Holi Days, of course, is, you know, one of our biggest community events, and all of our community organizations are involved in the coordination of this, and I think our parade made, hit some milestones this year. I thought the organization went unbelievably well, we tried some new things and it all worked out pretty good, the crowds were great, the weather was decent, and this was, happens to be the folks with the DJs float, and I think we ended up having over fifty total entries for the parade, and I thought all of that worked really well. We also got some press coverage from Holi Days this year. We have, oh, that's actually Santa's float there, and then we ended up being on the cover of Suburban Life, and asked for the Ugly Sweater 5K, which is hosted by the Rotary Club, and also in conversations with the Rotary Club, I think there's some folks that are interested in getting together right away and possibly making this bigger and better than ever before, so look for big things with this event as well. We also were on the cover of a newspaper called The Voice, this here is the Township float, which is part of the parade, so anyway, we had a good turnout with Holi Days this year. The next thing I wanted to mention is the Westmont is the Best Mont contest. This was a program that we're, we've created with our local student ambassadors, and specifically students from the junior high, and we're inviting the entire community to go online and sign up for this contest. You can enter by creating a song, a poem, or write a story, anything to express your passion for this community, and the deadline is the first Friday in January, and then we're going to announce the winner actually at the Chamber Annual Dinner this year, and so that's something that we're really looking forward to. The kids got involved with the promotion of this, and that's some of the students, and we went around and we interviewed a bunch of folks, Mayor Gunther included, but business owners and such, and that video will be ready early next week to promote the Westmont is Best Mont contest. Anyway, a lot of fun was had with that, and then the final thing that I was just gonna mention is that the Westmont is Best Mont slogan was caught on WGN-TV as they were promoting the Thanksgiving Day Parade. The announcers actually mentioned, there was an entry from Westmont, and they said on air, "Westmont is the best mont," and said it a couple times, and so it was just kind of exciting to see our slogan being, you know, catching on, so, and I think that's all I have at the moment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have nothing else, and I ask Clerk Czynski if she has items.
I have a couple of items. The Holi Days Code Drive is still going on through January 4th. There are two drop-off locations, the library and the Park District, and village offices will be closed December 24th, 25th, and January 1st, so we won't be here to do any business on those days. I just wanna congratulate everybody on the parade, I thought the parade was fantastic, we had a lot of fun on the parade, we laughed a lot. Tracy Valerio just, I think, awed everybody, she had lights in her hair, lights on her dress, it was spectacular, so that was great, and the gala at Oprah Hill's last Friday night was a wonderful time, too, so it was a great way to start out the holidays, that's all I have.
Filing period?
Filing period starts Monday, they can be here at 8 o'clock with the doors open.
We'll move over to Trustee Addington.
All right, thank you, Mayor. A couple of things, first of all, Community Development Meeting, which includes a lot of items, including things like what we're doing with code enforcement. Our next meeting will be January 17th, and they're also working very closely with Communications, they're going to develop a section in the Neighbors Magazine titled Code Enforcement Corner to remind residents about the codes and permits, and hopefully we'll start that with the February issue, so I think that's a real positive. I did send to everybody earlier a report, mayors and managers met on November 27th, and this was during the time that they were in the midst of their sessions with the veto overrides, they had two weeks of those, and I think there was a total of forty-some, forty-six total vetoes, and of those, many, many, many of them were eventually overridden by both houses. Some of them didn't make it, but a lot of them were overwritten, and, yeah, so that's a, that's a, that's something of a positive, I think some of the ones that were overridden were things that we had supported originally, although a couple of them were things that we hadn't supported. The other thing that was reported was that the new Conservative Party secured more than 5% of the votes, so they're now an established political party in Illinois, and the, the other thing that was reported is that there is a discussion, I haven't heard yet if there's something definitive with this, but they, they were talking, the current state legislature was talking about a lame duck session to do a capital improvements bill, and they would fund it through a tax increase on motor fuel taxes. Whether that happens or not is still kind of up in the air, but there's discussion in Springfield about it, so just be aware. We completed the Legislative Action Program, there are several new bills that are starting, there's new bills starting to be issued, one is Senate Bill 2486. Again, it's another bill that would help us until we get back to home rule, in which 25% of your hotel motel tax money can be used for economic development and our capital infrastructure. Again, I don't know if that'll get a lot of traction or not, we thought the bill that had been introduced last year through the IML, within a lot of communities through their support behind that, at the end didn't make it, and, but we'll see, you know, it's there. January 16th will be the legislative dinner and reception, and, believe it or not, they decided that they didn't want to meet on December 25th. I just can't understand why, you know, so our next meeting will be in January, and so that kind of brings you up to date on that, you can read my full report whenever you get an opportunity. The last thing that I wanted to mention tonight is the Westmont High School basketball team is in Plano. It's an away game, but they're presently are sitting with a record of four and two, and if they win the game tonight, the coach, Craig Etheridge, who has been with, how many years, Ron?
Since 98.
98. We'll have, if he wins tonight, it will be his 300th victory as a Westmont basketball coach, and that's a milestone for anybody, he is, he's a heck of a young man, I think the world of Craig, what I like about Craig is he, you know, winning is, when you're a coach, you wanna win, but Craig has always been more concerned with the fact that he's got good kids, and I think he's taken as much pride when we've gone to some of these tournaments, when they were picked as the team with the best sportsman, you know, the Good Sportsmanship Award, as he has with winning, and so he's, he's very interested in seeing that these kids come forward as, as good young men in addition to winning, so hopefully they win tonight, and if they do, Saturday night, we play here at home, and there'll probably be a big celebration, I think the game Saturday is at 6:00, anybody who's not doing anything, come on out and cheer on our team, and that's it, I, for tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. If no one, if everybody knows or not, he's the number one fan, he rides on the bus with them, he's probably sweating now he's not in Plano.
That's right.
We'll move on to Trustee Guzzo.
I hate missing.
Thank you, Mayor, a couple things. First, a big thank you to the Fire Department from Jenny Babiar and the Make-A-Wish Foundation for providing the opportunity for Braden to ride in a fire truck for Holi Days, so thank you very much for that. Police Department, the new Police Department Facebook page has been launched, Angela Whitehead is coordinating the content being published, promotion for the page in Neighbor, is in the Neighbors Magazine that'll be coming out, Channel 16, social media, electronic bulletin board, and they've already reached 25,000, so great, great on that, and then next, I wanna remind everybody, the Knights of Columbus is holding their annual pancake breakfast with Santa. For those of you who are not familiar with the Knights of Columbus, which we should be, their address is 25 North Cass Avenue downtown Westmont, they will be serving breakfast with Santa from 8:00 AM till noon, come on out, the kids can have their picture taken with Santa, it's a great fundraiser for the Knights of Columbus, and it's a great thing for all the kids to come on out and see, see the big red guy before he comes on the 24th, and that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, Jenny, you mentioned Tracy Valerio earlier, and we saw a picture of her, and this Tuesday, she hosts today Business After Hours at her DJ Sports Bar and Grill, and it was greatly attended, she does this annually and puts on the Chambers Christmas After Hours, so thanks to her and her staff there for, for having us on Tuesday. Our next EDC meeting will be January 2nd at 9:00 AM, and that's right next door to the, to the board room here at the Village Hall. We'll be discussing upcoming businesses and potential developments. The ribbon cuttings that we'll have, we'll have a couple new businesses coming to town, the Blue Village Vinyl, which is a record store, is at 309 West Ogden, and we're gonna have an announcement soon on a ribbon cutting for, also for Neat Kitchen, which is now back up and running, I noticed they hung the sign today that says they're now open, so we encourage people to go out and try the new Neat, and then Napleton Porsche is done with their addition and so forth, so they're up and running, and we, of course, encourage everyone to go buy a new Porsche, and then lastly, Mike, to you and your staff, the, the snow removal came heavy and wet, and once again, Westmont was, was tops all around here, I, you know, you drive other places and you think the roads are bad, and then you, you hit 55th or something and, and they're clear, so once again, the guys are on it, so that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
And just to add to that, December 15th, we're having a demo already at 10 o'clock on 63rd and Cass for that development, they're gonna kick it off with sledgehammers and...
I'm sorry, I did not flip my notes here, I apologize, I didn't realize I was on two pages, I apologize, but, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, yeah, so, it comes better when it's from you anyways, that more people listen, so that's good, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Nero?
Thank you, Mayor, just a few items, our next Public Works Committee is December 20th at 4:30 PM right here at Village Hall, and I wanted to let the public know that we just had a Public Works Facility Community Meeting on December 4th, however, we're gonna have another one on December 11th at 39 East Burlington, it's gonna be Tuesday, December 11th at 6:00 PM, please come out and learn about this important project, our new Public Works Facility, you get to see our current facility, ask any questions you want, and learn a lot about the project. And then lastly, kinda neat, we are gonna have a model water tour video, Public Works Department is working with Communications, and they just completed a promo video for Model Water Tower Contest, it's gonna be on the website, so keep your eyes peeled and check it out, that's all I have, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Little?
Thank you, Mayor, just wanted to recap the Administration Finance Committee, the meeting that launched this afternoon at 4:30, we discussed the Places for Eating Tax Increase and what that will help us do for the Public Works Building. We had a Public Works, we had a public meeting at the Public Works Building, and we heard a lot of information about how to finance and what we could and could not raise in regard to taxes, so that was extremely helpful to hear all that information, and then we also discussed the potential new events that are coming to Westmont, and last is the Holi Days Home and Business Decorating Contest, if you sign up by tomorrow, on, register online at westmont.ill.gov, we're gonna be judging on Monday and Tuesday, so make sure your business and your home are decorated to the hill, thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
Trustee Parker?
Thank you, Mayor, some environmental news this evening, actually, the holiday lights recycling is up and running now through January 31st at the library and the Fire Department headquarters, they're also, Waste Management is doing Christmas tree composting from January 7th to the 18th, and the trees have to be free of decorations, tinsel, and lights, and then we did have, on Monday evening, we had an Environmental Improvement Committee meeting, and very good group of people dedicated to the village on recycling efforts. At our last meeting, we had, Mike Brink, who was our rep from Waste Management there, did a presentation and provided us with some information about issues with recycling, and then one of the members of the EIC took that information and put it in a understandable form for us, so I have papers for everybody, and what this is, is a report on the garbage collection and recycling efforts through the community as kept track of by Waste Management, and what it does show you is garbage collection is up, recycling is down, and the composting is about the same, and it raised our eyebrows a little bit in that we thought larger containers just draw more trash than less recycling efforts, and I wanted to come here tonight and make sure that I let you know, and tell the community that they need to make a better effort, or a solid effort, to do clean recycling and get the right materials into those recycling containers, it's, you know, it's good for our community and it's good for the world. So that report kinda proves it out, that the trashcans are being used and being filled, and we need to do a little bit better with the recycling, so I'm not pointing a finger at anybody, but I'm just asking everybody to do better in that regard, that's all.
Thank you. Moving on the agenda, property tax levy hearing, and I'll ask, before I open up a public hearing, I'll ask Finance Director Parker to give some information on this topic.
This is the first piece regarding the property tax, as you will note, there's a few different items on the agenda, this is the opportunity that the village sets aside for the public to be able to comment on it, this is something that if our rates had gone up by more than 5% in terms of revenue requested in the levy, we would be required to hold this public hearing, they did not, however, the village, in the interest of transparency, decided to still publish a notice in the paper about this hearing and to hold it.
So, and later on the agenda, you'll see that it's gonna be board action on it, so at this time, I'm gonna open the public hearing on the property tax levy, so anybody wanna comment on it? Saying none, then I will close the hearing and move on the agenda to items to be removed from the consent agenda. Does any board member see an item they'd like to be removed?
No, sir.
If not, I'll ask Manager May to please read.
Good, 'cause if you removed anything, it would be empty, it's a very, it's a very long Village Board agenda, but the consent agenda is short. This evening, the first item is the Village Board Minutes, Board to Consider Approving the Minutes of the Village Board Meeting held November 8th, 2018, followed by Finance Ordinance Number 15 in the amount of $4,531,348.75, and there is just one purchase order, Westmont Fire Department, it's the 2% Association, in the amount of $34,129.24, and that completes the consent agenda, Mayor.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second to approve as read, on the question. Saying none, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Motion passes. We do not have any unfinished business, I'll move on to new business, abatement of taxes, Board to Consider Ordinance Abating the Taxes, here to four, levies for the year 2018 to pay debt service on general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2013A, its general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2013B, and its general obligation bonds, which is alternate revenue source, Series 2017 of the Village of Westmont, DuPage County, Illinois. Again, Finance Director Parker?
When we issue bonds that pledge one revenue source, we back it up with saying, if that revenue source fails, then it would go on the property tax levies, and so each year, we then let the county know, we, our revenue source has not failed, and we are not putting this on the property tax levies for the residents.
It's a annual, and the alternate revenue is lower interest rate usually than...
Yes, than if we didn't pledge right with that, yes.
Do I have a motion?
So move, Guzzo?
Second, Addington.
Motion is made in second, any questions, saying none, roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business B, property tax levy, Board to Consider Ordinance Adopting a 2018 Tax Levy Ordinance in the amount of $8,888,50, Finance Director Parker?
This is also an annual process where we adopt the levy for the property tax, we have two pieces to that levy, one is for the village, the other is for the library, we adopt the levy that the library board passes, and then for the village, we adopt our own levy based on the amount of money that we believe we will need for the year, we are capped, so we cannot go more than the CPI, which this year is 2.1% in terms of additional revenue, as always, the majority of that goes towards funding the pension, the way that our pension system is set up is set so that we assume there's going to be an increase each year, and that's where our property tax increase goes to.
And to point out, this tax amount is a very small percent of our total budget, so it's, you'd probably get 7% or 8%?
Something like that, yeah, in terms of what actually goes to the general fund.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second, Little?
Motion been made in second, on the question, anybody, nope, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business C, tax levy for SSA for Northwestmont Fire Protection, Board to Consider Ordinance Adopting a Tax Levy for the Village of Westmont Special Service Area, the SSA, for Northwestmont Fire Protection, and Finance Director Parker?
As you'll recall, last year, the village adopted a special service area covering the northern section of Westmont, which is not part of the village, this is so that we can provide fire services to this district, and this is something where the county is ending the district, so to reduce the number of paper districts and have the village simply provide that service, we have this special service area. As you'll recall, a couple of years ago, it was noted that the residents in that area paid a smaller rate for their fire service than the residents of the village, and so incrementally, we were increasing the rate that they pay each year, so that into five years, we anticipate they should be close to the same rate as the village pays.
Do I have a motion?
Go on, move, Addington.
Second, Nero? Motion made in second, on the question. Saying none, roll call, please.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Motion passed. New business D, Amendment to Chapters 18 and 34 of the Municipal Code, Board to Consider Ordinance to amend the following chapters of the Municipal Code related to building and engineering fees. One, Chapter 18, Buildings and Building Regulations; Two, Article 8, Fees and Bonds, Building, Section 18-487, Building Permit Fees; 18-488, Bonds; 18-489, Certificate of Occupancy Fee; and 18-490, Inspection Fees; and Three, Chapter 34, the Engineering and Flood Control, Article 4, Engineering and Bonds, Section 34-110, Definitions, New, 34-111, Review and Inspection Fees; and 34-112, which is Bonds. And Manager May is gonna give us some more information.
Yeah, Mayor, and although we discussed that a little bit at Administration Finance Committee, there are, these aren't changes in fees or structure, other than where they appear in the code, and the amendments here are sought to clarify and fine-tune the permit and bond sections of the Municipal Code, and in all, you know, an effort to, to better, you know, easier to understand and to figure out for those that are searching it through the internet and be able to do your own calculating, you know, as well as for staff, too, this is something that, you know, the people that work with it every day, it's very easy to navigate, but when, this was a project that interim director Marty Burke was working on, 'cause he was finding difficulty navigating it, so this is just to clean that up.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little?
Second. Motion made in second, on the question. More housekeeping, no questions, anybody, roll call, please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business E, Stormwater Management and General Engineering Agreements. Board to consider ordinance approving engineering agreements to provide the village with contractual service providers to review stormwater management applications according to DuPage County and local regulations, and to provide other general engineering plan reviews and inspections from the following companies. Burns and McDonald, McDonald Engineering Company. ESI Consultants, LTD, and Engineering Solutions Team. Manager May.
This item, these are engineering consulting consultants that we already use and have a relationship with, but they're usually on a project-by-project basis. To do, to be consistent with the plan review permit portions that have to do with site plan and stormwater management. This agreement here that you would be, we're asking you to approve, all three agreements are identical for each of the vendors. The fee rates that they charge for these services are identical, and they all agree to that. So that way, while we're, these fees that we collect are passed through and they're part of the permit fee, but they're consistent across, you know, all reviewers for the, for the exact same permit. So it's, it's a standardization of service.
Do I have a motion to approve? Motion approved, Nero.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second. On the question. Steve, is this, these rates, they're current rates? They've agreed to...
When Mr. Burke was, also worked on this, the, we first approached all these vendors, and what would you charge for these rates? And of course, they're all different, and they all have different contract documents. So together with John Zemanek, they put this all together, kind of found, if you want to call it an average, it's a little more complicated than that, but picked a price that they relatively, you know, were the same and where they were different, and kind of just standardized what it would be, and then gave that back to them and said, are you willing to... We have this work, we're willing to pay this. Do you want, do you want, do you want this work? And they, they agreed.
They agreed to...
Yeah, they might have had different unit prices, but they're, they will be following this.
They're all following the same. Any additional comments? Questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business F, Zoning Code Tax Amendment for Video Gaming. Board to consider ordinance approving the following proposed zoning ordinance tax amendment. One, tax amendment to Section 7.03, permitted and special uses in business districts of the zoning ordinance to list video gaming cafes as a special use in the B2 general business district. And we're going to hear from our Community Development Director, Sylvester.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Trustees, the proposed zoning tax amendment is basically to take video gaming cafes and designate them as a primary use. In the current zoning ordinance, they're accessory uses. And the idea is that if you have an existing business, like a restaurant, for example, you could have gaming as an accessory use. However, recently, there are new businesses where the gaming is the primary use. Some of the gaming cafes that we've seen in town. So to accommodate that newer kind of business, we're creating a new category called gaming cafes where it would be the primary use.
Primary use, but as a, still as a special use, so we...
Yes, it would be a special use in the B2 district. Thank you.
And this doesn't mean we're opening it up. This just means it clarifies the special use. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Barker.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second. Comments? Questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business G, Illinois Cafe and Service Company Gaming Special Use, 6601 South Cass Avenue. Board to consider ordinance approving a special use request from Illinois Cafe and Service Company, LLC, DBA Dottis, regarding the property located at 6601 South Cass Avenue for the following. One, special use permit to operate a video gaming cafe in the B2 general business district. Director Sylvester.
So, as you're all aware, Dottis is currently located at 63rd and Cass, and that area is being redeveloped. And Dottis is looking to relocate to a B2 zoning district in Falcon Plaza. And prior to the text amendment that was just passed, being as it was a primary use, it wouldn't be allowed. It would have needed to be an accessory use to another business. However, now we have a category where a gaming cafe is allowed if they receive a special use permit. And so Dottis is applying for a special use permit.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second, Barker.
Motion made in second. On the question. Anybody in the audience? Yes. State your name and...
Mayor, Michael Moody, on behalf of Illinois Cafe. Just wanted to make a comment to the mayor and to the trustees, and especially to John Zemanek, who I don't think is here today. Thank you so much for all your help in this regard. We love doing business in Westmont, and we hope to continue that. And these efforts here will allow that to happen. And myself and James Lang, on behalf of the company, just wanted to thank everybody for their assistance in this rather difficult situation, which we were able to work out.
Thank you. Again, currently located in the 63rd and Cass Development, which is going to be sledgehammered on the 15th.
15, yeah.
So we're looking forward to that, and they're relocating probably four blocks down the road. Any other comments? Questions?
This might be to the attorney, but I saw today that they were, they're allowed to be in there until February 28th. Does that, does that sound accurate in the ordinance?
Yeah, the, you can add too, but the, the idea for having the license there, there's a relocation involved. So to ensure that the relocation takes place in a timely manner, they're not ready to open now. They have to do that build-out pending the approval tonight. So this will be valid until the 28th. They, they should and need to be relocated by that time, or this, that just allows you to reconsider it if that has not been accomplished by the 28th, February 28th.
Correct, yeah. So I guess more my question becomes is, what happens when they start tearing down and you guys are still there? What, is there a time where you guys are not open? Is that what's going to happen?
That's correct. Which is unfortunate, but that's...
Okay, because I guess before, while we discussed, that was not going to happen, but that is. Okay, well then, thank you guys, I guess.
If you'd like to extend it a little further, we'd be happy to do that.
After talking to Bradford, that date isn't causing them many issues, so...
I would have to say that you might feel a little bit lonely where you are at now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We do.
Apple parking.
We, we do. You just took the words right out of my mouth.
Any additional comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business H, Public Works Building Expansion, 39 East Burlington. Board to consider ordinance approving a special use and zoning code variation for the construction of a new public works facility as follows. One, special use permit to allow the addition of a new administrative office, vehicle storage area, and maintenance garage building. Two, zoning code variance request to reduce the front yard building setback. Three, zoning code variance request to increase the maximum height of the fence located in the front yard. And four, site and landscaping plan approval. Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. These requests that we're asking for will allow us to build a new public works facility located at 55 East Burlington. The variances we're asking for are variances that are currently already in place there. We're just asking them for the new building. The site and landscaping plan approval, we've worked with planning and zoning, and we've taken their consideration, into consideration their, their plans, and we are implementing many of those plans that they recommended for the new facility. So we're just asking for the board to approve.
They specifically voted on the variances and the, and the special use permit, and then they, you're describing additional recommendations that they made as well. So this is a zoning P&amp;Z recommendation for your approval tonight.
Do I have a motion? Motion, motion approved, Nero.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second to approve. And again, this is not authorizing any funding. This is just a site approval if and when we do this project. Any additional comments? Questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business I, amendment to the IGA, Central Business District TIF. Board to consider ordinance approving a first amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between the Village and Community Unit School District 201, related to the Central Business District Tax Increment Financing District. And I've got Manager May to discuss it.
In our Central Business District TIF, and maybe the Finance Director can help me, but we have a relationship where if all TIF revenue generated, there is a fixed percent that goes back to the school district for the school facility that's in the TIF district as well. The, that fixed percent, in order to accommodate a single development, one developer at one location, the amount of assistance is greater that the percent remaining is more is needed than that. So in order to split the difference between the, the portion of the TIF that would come back to the school district and then to the village, but the village meaning back into the TIF district, would be, that's being split 50/50, and it's a little bit less than the percent they normally would have gotten in the first place. So this is a appointed one-location amendment to that agreement that you've already approved.
And it's just for that one project?
Yes.
That location. Do I have a motion to...
Motion to approve, Little. Second, Guzzo.
Motion made in second. On the question. Again, the school district's already approved it.
Yes, and we, I should mention, we appreciate their consideration in, in doing this, too, because we're, in order to accommodate this and make this happen, we're each whittling back a little bit of what we would normally get out of it.
Seeing no other questions, I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business I, competitive bidding requirements. Board to consider ordinance amending Chapter 2, Administration of the Village Code of Ordinances, to create a new Article 10 entitled, entitled Competitive Bidding. Manager May.
Mayor, the, the, we're, we're already subject to the state of Illinois, the competitive bidding requirements, and that would be for anything that would be in excess of $25,000. I understand that that value might be going up in the near future. But that aside, the competitive bidding requirements also, they state in this for, like, public improvements. And how they apply to, or I should say, a public works project. So we have our own facilities maintenance, that we have projects that are in there that we would do, you know, maintenance or remodeling, or whatever it is that we're spending on the, on the local thing. Is that a public works project or not? So there's a little bit of ambiguity in that. But even if it, you know, was or wasn't, whatever that determination is, any, if you wanted to, you already have in the statute the ability to not waive, but acknowledge that if you wanted to award a contract that was in excess of $25,000, you could do that as long as it's with a supermajority vote. And the reason this is in here is just to clarify that this is not new powers. This is just reaffirming that you intend to follow the competitive bidding requirements for the state of Illinois up to that dollar amount. And it allows the approval of special contracts in excess of $25,000 without competitive bidding, for those same reasons I stated. So this is a, you know, more of an affirmation. And the reason it's in there is that the next agenda item would be the first application of that. That would also require the supermajority vote. So I, if you've got any questions on that, you'll have to ask this guy.
Do I have a motion?
Since I understand it.
I'll move, Guzzo.
Second, Addington.
Motion made in second. On the question. Nobody? And again, Manager May, by law, $25,000, but we could always bid something less than if we wanted to.
Yes, and, and we do. So our own purchasing process, you know, policies are, it doesn't have to be like a necessary, like, a bid, like a... A verific for bid, but we always do quotes for comparisons, and we do competitive shopping for essentially everything we spend money on.
And professional services, can't bid that out.
You can't, you cannot bid professional, certain professional services based on dollar amount. You can only do it based on qualifications and applicability to your project.
Any additional comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
I didn't get what's due there.
Motion passes. New business K, Police Station Renovations. Board to consider ordinance approving an agreement with KH Renovations Incorporated for facilities upgrade to the Westmont Police Station, 500 North Cass Avenue. And by, oh, all right. I was going to have you walk up and...
The chief is comfortable.
Deputy Chief.
You mean, have a look.
Evening, all. We are looking to renovate our, the top floor of our building, which is the two bathrooms right outside of our training room. If you've been in the building, they're, they're rather large bathrooms. We're also looking to remodel two of the bathrooms on our main floor, the one that would be just outside of our records division, and one that would be just outside of our, our dispatch center, our old dispatch center. So we're looking at remodeling four bathrooms at the police station in the very near future.
Remodeling, they'll meet all the criteria for handicap and...
Absolutely. We've had contractors come in, we, who know what the handicap requirements are. So they, they bid it as such.
And is this from confiscated money?
Yeah, we, we will be using funds from our DEA funds for this project. It won't be anything that was budgeted, if that will come out of the, the general fund or the police budget. This is something that will be only using DEA funds for.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Nero. Motion made in second to approve. On the question. Can we use DEA funds for public works facilities? Well, you know what? If they just store their vehicles there... Put something in there, yeah.
Home rule.
But again, for those who don't, you've got to spend it on something that's new or renovated for the police.
Right, and maybe Finance Director Parker knows all the rules better than I do, but it has to be for a police facility or, or police use. First, enough things you wouldn't normally be spending it on. Yeah, things that you normally wouldn't necessarily budget for yearly.
So if you combine the buildings, you could use it, is what you're saying.
Yeah, now you're thinking.
Give them one, one parking, one wash bay.
Any other comments? Question? I mentioned handicap, because the chief may need to use that. You've got a thing on your leg. Roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero. Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes. New Business L, Illinois Fraternal Order of the Police Collective Bargaining Agreement. Board to Consider Ordnance Approving a Collective Bargaining Agreement by and between the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council, Westmont Lodge, 63 and the Village of Westmont.
I can do it.
Okay, Manager May.
Well, it's that simple. It's a collective bargaining agreement, it has been, you know, previously negotiated, and both sides are in agreement. You saw draft of that last time, and this is here for your approval.
Do I have a motion? Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second. On the question. I think we got them all answered before. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Motion passes. New Business M, Government Insurance Network Authorized Representative. Board to Consider Resolution to Authorize Renee Brainard, I hope I said that right, Assistant Human Resource Director as the Authorized Representative for the Government Insurance Network. And I think Manager May.
Mayor, this item, and it, this is, this item is specifically for the Government Insurance Network, the next, this item and the next two are all for changing what would be the delegate or the authorized representative for the village for these different agencies, which is normally held by the, the Human Resources Director, who has since retired. So you're, we are naming a new delegate in these categories. This one is Renee Brainard for Kathy Crane.
Renee's in the audience. Do I have a motion?
Go on, move, Addington.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second. Any additional questions? Comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes. Motion passes. New Business N, Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency Delegate and Alternate Delegate. Board to Consider Resolution to Appoint Renee Bernard?
Brainard.
Bernard. Assistant Human Resource Director as Delegate and Reaffirm Spencer Parker, Finance Director, as Alternate Delegate to the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency, or Irma. Manager May.
That, that covers it, it's that simple.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Nero. Motion made in second. I don't see any additional comments. Roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. New Business O, Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund Authorized Agent. Board to Consider Resolution to Appoint Spencer Parker, our Financial Finance Director, as Authorized Agent to the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, which is IMRF. And Manager May.
Same.
And who was it before? Kathy?
It was Kathy before this particular one. Mr. Parker's a more pertinent fit.
Yeah, and you don't have to have the human resource person.
No, it just happened to be Kathy.
Do I have a motion?
Go on, move, Addington.
Second, Nero. Motion made in second to approve. Roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes. Motion passes. Miscellaneous, did we miss anything? Yes, trustee Barry.
Mayor, I, I did, and Larry will shoot me if I don't get this out tonight, okay? I didn't flip my page here, but we have Dining in Westmont. As part of our ongoing promotional campaign of dining around the world in Westmont, the Chamber of Commerce and Shaw Media have partnered up. So a dining review was just published on Italiano, which is located at 6232 South Cass. So we encourage all to view the full review at Shop, Dine, Discover Westmont's Facebook page, and savor their delicious Westmont dining experience. And if anyone has not been there, I highly recommend to go there, it is fantastic, so. Okay, Larry, we're good now? Okay, very good, thank you.
Now you won't be in trouble.
And again, it's at 63rd and Cass where we're doing a demo, but that's one of the two buildings that are, or three buildings, Walgreens, Burger King, and?
So maybe after the demo, we can all go there and get some lunch or something.
See, there you go.
If I read that review right, that it's the best food that our Greg Pilt has ever tasted in Westmont.
Wow. Very good.
I'll check that out.
And now you got, trustee Addington.
Yeah, the other thing I wanted to mention, it, it occurred to me after, as we were talking, tomorrow is December 7th, and of course, let's not forget what that was.
Update which?
Being Pearl Harbor Day, and the people that we lost, the citizens we lost, but also the great heroes who helped us after that to win the war. So, don't forget.
Do I have? Thank you, chief. Any other miscellaneous? Seeing none. I do need an executive session, and the reason for it is I need a motion to adjourn executive session to discuss the following. One, Employment and Compensation of Specific Village Employees Pursuant to Section 2 C1 of the Open Meetings Act. And two, Setting the Price for the Sale of Real Estate Owned by the Village Pursuant to Section 2 C6 of the Open Meetings Act. Do I have a motion? Motion to adjourn executive session, Nero.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second to adjourn pursuant to the two items. Roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Add.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to adjourn into the executive session. Following the executive session, we do not have any further business, and this meeting will be adjourned. Again, thank everybody for coming, and at this point, we're going to go into executive session.